All right, again, welcome to everyone. Glad to see folks in attendance. We'll jump straight into our task for the evening and we'll start with B1 announcements and reminders. Mr. Garza, do you have anything for us this evening?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do have several updates for you tonight. We want to remind you that this upcoming Tuesday, September 9th, we will be having a special city council meeting here in these chambers at 5:00 PM to continue the progression of our tax rate and budget timeline. In addition, we plan on providing an update on the utility subcommittee work at this upcoming week. We committed early on in that process that we'd be providing a monthly update to you, and so we intend on doing that during the special meeting next week. On behalf of the library, I have quite a few updates for you this evening, but I think it's warranted considering they continue to celebrate their 50th anniversary, so I think that buys them a few extra minutes, right? In celebration of National Library Card Sign Up Month, and of course, their 50th anniversary, the Victoria Public Library has multiple celebrations happening this month. Last chance to register for the .5K Storybook Fund Run being held on Saturday, September 6th. The family-friendly run starts at the Nave Museum and ends four blocks away with a free community block party in the library parking lot. Participants are encouraged to dress as a book character. Green Cow Creamery has exclusive VPL-themed flavors through September 6th, so we encourage you to check them out. The Friends Annual Fall Book Sale will be held from September 14th through the 20th, starting with the members-only sale on September 14th and ending with the $1 bag fill-up the morning of September 20th, and I'm sure we'll hear more about it here in a second. Tickets, tables, and sponsorships are also available for Librarian Nocturne, a night at the library. Did I say that right? Awesome. Cocktail Party and fundraiser hosted by the Friends of the Victoria Public Library on Thursday, September 25th at 6:00 PM. And as the icing on the birthday cake, VPL has a goal of 50,000 cardholders for their 50th anniversary. New and newly renewed cardholders who sign up this month can get the commemorative library card by resident Esther Gourau. Did I say that right? No. All right. Esther Gourau, who won the library card design contest. Proceeds with these events benefit the Friends of the Victoria Public Library, which provides funding for library event programming for all ages. For more information about any of these events, visit victoritx.gov/vpl50 or 361-485-3301. On behalf of the Communications Department, hopefully you saw the release of the latest episode of Town Talk, featuring our very own Joe Novosad, Director, of course, of Discover Victoria, and it is now out on YouTube and Spotify. Residents can learn about all the attractions at Tejas Fest next month, including the brand-new Chihuahua Races. That's right, Chihuahua Races. Plus, residents can learn more about other fun things to do in Victoria like Jag Fest on Thursday of this week and the Tacos and Margs Trail. Tacos and Margs and Chihuahuas, oh my! I don't write this. I just read it. On behalf of Development Services, please join us in shaping the future of transit in Victoria. The Victoria Transit Public Engagement Plan Survey is now open, giving you the chance to influence the implementation of new transit routes. Visit our online map to provide your feedback and share your thoughts on proposed routes. Your input is vital in creating a transit system that meets the needs of our community. Participate in the survey or comment on the map at victoritx.gov/TransitPlan. The survey is available in both English and Espanol. We can't wait to hear from you. I didn't read that right. It's got an exclamation point. We can't wait to hear from you. And lastly, I want to announce and introduce a new high-level position, new high-level member of our organization. It's a new position that we added as a way to just be more timely with our capital improvement plans. We understand that it's a priority for the public as well as for you to ensure that we complete all the street infrastructure projects in a timely and efficient manner, and so we added a deputy city engineer position, and so I'm pleased to introduce publicly Rudy Mora, who is our new deputy city engineer. He comes from Kingsville, so I know a thing or two. I actually hired him as my city engineer in Kingsville, what seems like forever ago now, but we're excited. He brings a lot of experience in civil engineering. He served as city engineer not only in Kingsville but for the City of Alice before then, and basically has his whole career in civil engineering. And so I'm very excited that he's joining the team because I am confident that he will help us do better at meeting your expectations and the public's expectations as it relates to our infrastructure projects. And like always, I like to put people on the spot, but I gave him a heads up because he had already walked up. So, Rudy?
You're lucky you got the heads up. It's only because he knew you.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Exactly. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me be part of Team Victoria. I look forward to great things and continuing my engineering career with y'all.
Very good. Well, welcome. Great to have you.
Thank you. Thanks, Rudy. And that is all I have for this evening.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll jump then into public and employee recognitions. We'll start with a couple of proclamations. First one being Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Ms. Hilberg?
Yes, sir. Whereas childhood cancer is the leading cause of death by a disease in children in the United States, impacting 47 children a day, with one in 285 children in the United States being diagnosed after their, before their 20th birthday. And whereas despite an increase in the rates of pediatric cancer, it is still grossly underfunded and under-researched. Most protocols and treatments haven't changed in over 30 years due to the lack of funding and research, and 95% of survivors will have significant health impacts long after they ring the bell ending treatment, including secondary cancers resulting from damage to healthy cells during chemo treatments. And whereas hundreds of nonprofit organizations at the local and national level are helping children with cancer and their families cope through educational, emotional, and financial support, and whereas researchers and healthcare professionals work diligently dedicating their expertise to treat and cure children with cancer, too many children, too many children are affected by the deadly disease, and more must be done to raise awareness and find a cure. Now therefore, I, Dwayne Crocker, Mayor of the City of Victoria, designate September 2025 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Victoria, Texas, and encourage all citizens to support this cause that so deeply impacts families in every community.
Congratulations. Yeah, you're welcome to say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members, for making this proclamation. We definitely appreciate the support. And as was written in the proclamation, there's 45 kids a day that are diagnosed with childhood cancer, and 1,800 a year lose their fight. Part of the thing with our nonprofit is that we're trying to bring awareness and to try to gain more federal funding for childhood cancer. Pediatric cancer only receives roughly about 4% of the total funding for cancer research. So, you know, 4% is not enough for our kids. So, again, thank you, Mayor and Council, for doing this proclamation and for dedicating this month for childhood cancer. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on then to our second proclamation tonight is for Hunger Action Month. Ms. Hilberg?
Yes, sir. Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of vital concern in Texas, where one in eight people face food insecurity and one in every five children do not know where their next meal will come from, and whereas every need, everyone needs nutritious food to thrive, and in every community in America, people are working hard to provide for themselves and their families, yet in 2023, 47 million people, including more than 14 million children, faced food insecurity in the United States. In Victoria County, 19% of our population, or nearly one in every five residents, are food insecure. And whereas the City of Victoria is committed to taking steps to combat hunger by working with the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent, a member of the Feeding America Nationwide Network of Food Banks, and educating people about the role and importance of food banks and addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues. And whereas approximately 50,000 people in the Golden Crescent region rely on food provided by the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent each month, and whereas the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent distributes more than 6.7 million meals in 2024 through the network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations, and whereas the month of September has been designated Hunger Action Month in order to bring attention to food insecurity in our communities and to enlist the public in the movement to end hunger by taking action, including volunteer shifts, social media shares, and donations to ensure every community and everybody in it has the food they need to thrive. Whereas the food banks across the country, including the Food Bank of the Golden Crescent, continue to work tirelessly throughout the months of September to bring awareness and help end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I, Dwayne Crocker, Mayor of the City of Victoria, proclaim September 2025 as Hunger Action Month in Victoria, Texas, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens.
Mayor, Council, we certainly appreciate the continued support that we get from the city. I believe we have a, I don't believe it, it is fact, we have the Hunger Hero Challenge going on right now, and I can tell you, it's exploding. We have 38 teams across the city, and we're looking forward to great things happening from that. But again, I want to invite each one of you to come out. We'll be giving tours, so come on out and see what we do. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Well, we appreciate all you do. Thank you. All right. Our next item then is our Keep Victoria Beautiful Monthly Beautification Award. Ms. Uker?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before we announce our Beautification Award winner for September, I wanted to remind everybody, we have another big cleanup coming up. September 20th is our fall sweep, and this is historically our biggest one of the year. So, we need lots of teams to sign up, individuals. The more people we get to sign up, the more places we clean up. As a reminder, our main location is at the Target, and we clean up along the loop, but then we put teams remotely all over city roadways, and we also feed everybody. So, everybody gets something. We have tacos from New Rodeo, and we have Chick-fil-A again, and Salvation Army makes sure we have coffee and donuts when we get there, so no one's going to leave hungry. So, it'll be 8:00 AM to 10:00 on Saturday, September 20th, and please sign up. We really need people to sign up so we know how to plan for teams, and you can do that. Just go to keepvictoriabeautiful.org, there's sign up right there. And so, on to our Beautification Award winner. So, this will be a little bit of a prolonged award because our award winner last minute could not be here tonight. They had an issue. So, you'll have to have the picture and the hoopla and all of that later in the month. But our award winner for September was Guaranteed Title, which is on East Airline, and if you've driven by there lately, they've done a really nice makeover, paint and new landscaping, and it really shows that an area with just a little green space can really do a lot to improve. So, we'll have pictures and put a big announcement out, but Guaranteed Title is our September winner. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Uker. Mr. Garza, do you have any other public and employee recognitions?
No, sir.
Okay. Great.
I'd like to recognize the Chief of Police back there in the corner. Last Wednesday, Ricky and I attended the Golden Crescent General Assembly, and the Chief won an award from Golden Crescent for his help with the region, and I want to acknowledge that fine gentleman back there in the corner.
Congratulations, Chief. Thought you were going to fly under the radar there, didn't you?
Why that wasn't submitted?
Very good. Items from Council. Do we have any this evening?
I have one thing.
Okay.
I'd like to direct this to Mr. Foot. My screen timed out.
That sounded very serious there first.
I thought you were in trouble.
Is anybody else having issues?
Anybody else have issue? All right. We'll see if we can get you up and running. While we're working on the IT issue, why don't we go ahead and take care of Citizens Communication? I have two cards this evening. First is from Michael Von der Oo. Mr. Von der Oo, welcome back.
Hi, I'm Michael Von der Oo. I live at 2107 North Bend, Jordan. Good evening, the Council Mayor. I'd like to thank Michelle from Code Enforcement for working on Victoria Oaks Trailer Park. The personal injury lawyer don't seem to want to work on it, so Code Enforcement is kind of like the manager of it, and Michelle was working on it. She's the code enforcement supervisor, and they got banana leaves going across the sidewalk to where if you walk, you have to walk in the road or ride your bike on it, and school has started, and it's a danger to the children, and I don't know why the mailboxes, they can't put lids on them. They don't want to put lids on them, and one mailbox on trailer 32 is completely off. And the personal injury lawyer, despite being a multimillionaire, he refuses to take care of his trailer park, and it's really up to the city council and code enforcement and everything, and I wish he would take care of his trailer park. And just recently, he made this memo or something where people have to get their trailer hitches cut off and stuff, and they can't afford that and stuff. Some can't even afford to fix the roof to their trailers, and I don't think that's right. They have to cut off the trailer house, the trailer hitch, you know? I mean, just put a bucket over it so you can't see it, you know? And it's very expensive to hire a welder to come and cut this off, and I think the reason he wants it like that is if you ever want to move after he abics you, you can't move because you don't got a hitch, and you'd have to pay someone to put it back on, and it's a low-income area, and I don't know why he wants to do this to people. It's not like these people are millionaires. I mean, some trailer houses cost a million dollars, like for a million-dollar movie stars, but this ain't one of the issues, and it's almost like he's harassing the tenants. I mean, he's not harassing them because he can legally do that, but I don't think that's right what he's doing to the tenants. And I would like Dana Fowler, she's the Vice President of Operations, to take care of the trailer park, someone to call her and talk to her, because overall, they've been doing a really bad job, and I wish the personal injury lawyer, who has 20 years' experience, would rise to the occasion and take care of the trailer park and not make people cut off the trailer hitch. They can't afford all that, and no matter how you put it, it's still a trailer house, no matter how hard you, how much you fix it. Thanks and have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Von der Oo. My second card then for the evening is from Mr. Harley Fisk. Mr. Fisk, good to see you. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, and interested citizens. I know that Jesus covered the events going on at the library. The fund run starts at the Nave Museum because that was the site of the original library here in Victoria, right? At that time, it was called the Bronte Library. And at the event on the 25th, we will be having silent auction for, among other things, some of the books that came from the Bronte Library, right? So, a lot of those are rare historical, mostly Texas books, right? So, I just wanted to invite everyone from the council to attend the event. It should be a lot of fun for everyone. We're having sort of a mystery play going on during the event, so again, a good time to show your support for the library. Again, funds raised go to support library programs, and just want to thank everyone for their time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisk. Appreciate it. All right. We will close Citizens Communication. We will go to Section C, Items with Public Hearings. I do want one clarification here, Ms. Lacy, because this evening, a little bit different from our normal agenda, we have two items of public hearings, but then those items are also action items. Can you remind us of our protocols here?
Sure, absolutely. Yes, sir. So, we do have two items for public hearings, however, both of those items will be called up as action items later in the agenda. So, the most appropriate way to handle that is to open the public hearing, ask for public comment, and then it's Council to save their comments and conversations until it's called up as an action item later in the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. So, with that then, Item C1.
Item C1 is a public hearing on the 2025-2026 City of Victoria Tax Rate.
Is there anyone here who wishes to address Council on Item C1? Please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will close Item C1, and we will move on to Item C2.
Item C2 is a budget public hearing.
Is there anyone here who wishes to address Council on Item C2? Please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will close Items, the hearing for Item C2, and we will revisit those shortly. In the meantime, let's jump to the consent agenda. Ms. Hilberg?
Yes, sir. Item D1 is the adoption amendments to the regular meeting held on August 19th, 2025. Item D2 is an ordinance approving a budget amendment in the amount of 125,000 for the parking lot project at Riverside Golf Course. That item's on second and third reading. Item D3 is a resolution adopting the Title VI Plan and Compliance Program. Item, that's it? I'm sorry, it's short today.
Very good. Thank you. Do I have any motions with respect to the consent agenda?
I move we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion of second. All the various say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passed, it is read. We will then move to action items from Council and start with Item E1.
Item E1 is an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for fiscal year beginning on October 1st, 2025, in an amount, amount of 255,78,343 dollars.
Seventy-eight dollars.
And that item is on first reading.
Very good. All right. Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm sure you noticed that the tax rate and the budget figure that were posted on tonight's agenda differ from our last conversation that we had, and so I wanted to walk you through mainly what those differences are. I pressed the button and it took me to quorum call. Everybody's here.
As you say. No one's left. I think we're good.
So, as she pulls it up, you noticed a different tax rate that was posted with the budget, and so we obviously proposed the voter approval tax rate of 80, no, I'm sorry, 4820. I'm like all confused with all the numbers, but 40, .4820. The tax rate that we posted and that we've updated the budget to reflect is of the 4790, which is reflective of a 2.5% increase in property tax revenue. And so I'll walk you through that impact here shortly. Okay. So, what was originally proposed on August 5th, this, these were the reflected amounts. So, it was 242 million in revenues and roughly 254 million in expenditure budget. That, again, accounted for the voter approval tax rate of .4820. What's in your packet today reflects a couple of changes. One, you may recall that we made a recommendation to incorporate a bond redemption program. So, this is reflected in both revenues and expenditures. It actually shows in expenditures twice because it accounts for the transfer from the stabilization fund as one transaction of 600,000, and then it accounts for the second transaction of the actual bond redemption, and so that's why that impact of 1.2 million. And as we discussed during that recommendation, that basically is going to help us buy down the INS rate in fiscal year '27 by roughly 1 cent, and so we're being proactive with trying to control the tax rate with this investment. We also have adjusted the tax rate, as I mentioned, from .4820 to .4790. I decided to adjust the tax rate, quite frankly, simply just based off of conversation with every single one of you. There really wasn't any clear consensus on any particular tax rate, and there's obviously difference of opinions on Council, and so I made the decision to adjust the tax rate in what I can only describe as a compromised tax rate between the differing opinions on Council. That has a, of course, a negative effect on our revenues as we, that would, as that would cause us to receive less money in property tax revenue to the tune of about 161,000 dollars. So, we've adjusted the budget to reflect that. We've also adjusted the budget to reflect a little over 100,000 dollars in reductions in expenditures, and if you're asking, why does, why don't those monies align or those amounts align, is because we were already being very conservative with sales tax revenue, and so we feel very comfortable that we don't necessarily need to match that dollar-for-dollar. That 100,000, that 100,000 dollars that we're reflecting as expenditure adjustments are some of the new positions, we're basically going to hold off on hiring those until the end of the holidays or past the holidays and wait until the beginning of the calendar year. And so all in all, it adjusts the proposed budget on both the revenue front and the expenditure front, and so it adjusts the revenues to about 242.6 million dollars, and it adjusts the expenditure side of it to roughly 255 million. That revenue adjustment that you see there in, in, in black is reflected on the sales tax, and sorry, it wasn't that clear. So, that 162,000 that you see as revenue adjustment, that's us adjusting sales tax revenue and ambulance billing revenue. You may recall back on August 5th, us talking about just us continuing to take a very conservative approach. back on August 5, us talking about just us continuing to take a very conservative approach to that. And so we're basically not taking as much of a conservative approach to it and basically balancing the budget, so to speak, through a combination of increasing those revenues and adjusting the expenditure side.
Where's the adjustment expenditures?
That's that 104. General Fund.
That's a delay in the positions that you talked about, correct?
The bond redemption is throwing it off so that my brain's not doing the math.
If you're kind of, don't forget the 1.2 million if you're trying to do the mental math.
Right. I get it. It doesn't, it's not intuitive, but.
It's not. Because I asked like a million times to, like, explain it, Wesley. Nonetheless, this is what the budget gets adjusted to by decreasing the tax rate from the voter approval tax rate to the .4790. I know that there's been conversation about potentially adjusting it back to the .4820. And so I wanted to, just for formality's sake, show you what would happen in that scenario, as all that would be adjusted would be the inclusion of the bond redemption program. But the item that is before you this evening, though, is this adjustment. That's the way that it's been posted. Keep in mind that this is just the first reading. And so what you would be voting on is this change above. And if any additional change is needed, based off of the conversation on the tax rate, we can make that adjustment next week. I already plan on making an adjustment next week, as I will be presenting an option to the Compensation Subcommittee this upcoming Monday to adjust the pay program to invest an additional roughly $200,000 on utility-centric positions, as I do believe we need to be more aggressive with our utility-centric positions, especially now that, you know, we better understand the impact that the vacancies have on our utility operation. And so I already was planning on adjusting the budget next week with that, and we'll adjust it accordingly depending on your conversation on the tax rate. But again, the action before you is what's shown above. One of the common questions that I've been getting, and I just, for the benefit of not having to come back up here again, I figured I would put this up now. But rightfully so, one common question that's been coming our way is, you know, well, we see that the county's doing this, the college is doing that, the school district is doing that. This is a very unique year, as we've explained previously. And this specific table highlights that to an even further degree. I'll call your attention to the fact that the total NTAV impact amongst the different jurisdictions differs. And one of the biggest driving factors there is the new improvements. And so you'll notice that our new improvement, as I had explained in a previous presentation, is the lowest that it's, second lowest that it's been in 10 years, at only roughly, at only around $27 million. And you see how the county and the, and the, and the college have new improvements above $100 million. And so that obviously impacts how they eventually end up with their respective calculation. And so you see here, for example, that the county, because they have a positive NTAV, are able to decrease their tax rate, right? And as we've explained before, there's a correlation between NTAV and tax rate, right? As you start to get a positive growth, it allows you the ability to decrease your tax rate. And that's what the county saw. You can see how the college has chosen to basically go after the voter approval tax rate. You'll notice that the college has a voter approval tax rate of .183, and their proposed tax rate is .1832. And then you'll see how the school district was impacted with their NTAV, presumably because of some of the changes with exemptions. You may recall there was quite a bit of change with homestead exemptions at the state level. And so presumably, some of that potentially had an impact. We're not sure. But regardless, they have chosen to keep the same tax rate. I did ask staff to do some more research with some of the surrounding communities, and Keisha did a great job in doing some of that research, because I was curious on what other communities were doing. And it was fascinating to see, because some of the smaller communities around us, like Goliad and Gonzalez, for example, are increasing their tax rate by 20% and 18% respectively. And it's always very interesting to see that data, because Port Lavaca, for example, has a tax rate of .80. And so I know that oftentimes, people have the opinion that we have a high city tax rate, but in comparison to many of the communities in our surrounding area, that's not the case. I don't have a slide to showcase that, as I don't want to necessarily make that the reason why that should, you know, alter our decision, right? We need to make decisions that are best for Victoria, regardless of what other communities are doing. But I just think it's important to just have some situational awareness to the fact that other communities are being very aggressive with their tax rate. So just food for thought. And with that, I'll happy to answer any questions that you might have. And I will put it back on this slide, since this particular action item is related to the budget of $255 million.
Any questions for Mr. Garza? No? Okay. Then the action item that's before us is E1, which would be approving and adopting the proposed budget listed on the agenda is 255078343. Do you have any motions with respect to that action item?
I have a question.
Yes.
If we change the tax rate, and I am going to propose that we go to the voter-approved tax rate because of SB 10, not just because of SB 10, I actually think that's the best for the city. Does that affect, if we approve this budget as it is, does that, does that have any effect on that?
It would. And that's why I shared this scenario here. So this scenario here suggests what the budget would be adjusted to if we eliminated the, or I should say, if we reverted back to the original proposed tax rate of .4820.
But if we approve it, we can revert back.
If you approve what?
Well, we're approving the budget right now.
Correct. The first reading. Yes.
Okay. So with the second reading, we can amend it.
Correct. Yeah. We can amend the proposed budget next week, which, again, I was already planning on doing anyway, to incorporate the more aggressive proposed pay program for utility-centric positions.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. So then back to Item E1. Is there a motion with respect to this item?
Move to approve Item E1.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. We've got a motion and a second for Item E1. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed. One opposition. Item E1 passes. We will then move to Item E2.
Item E2 is an ordinance setting the tax rate for 2025 tax year at a total of .4790 per $100 of property valuation.
All right. So we've already seen the information on this. For purposes of discussion, do I have a motion with respect to Item E2?
Yeah, make a motion to approve Item E2.
And I believe.
And I move that the property tax be increased by the adoption of the tax rate of 0.4790, which is effectively a 1.7% increase in the tax rate.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Young, do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I'd like to amend the resolution to read, instead of .4790, to read the voter-approved tax rate of 4820 because of SB 10. Oh, so I have to read the whole thing. Okay, thank you. Ricky and I at the Golden Crescent General Assembly heard A.J. Lauterback talk, and he made the point that SB 10 will pass. They don't know if it'll be 1% or 2.5%. And he made the point that there's nobody in the assembly that has ever run a city or a county, and you can tell. Okay, I'm going to amend it. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .4820, which is effective as a 2.34% increase in the tax rate.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend the previous motion.
And the reason I'm doing this is because we can't go up. We can go down. So if we want to change it next week, we can change it next week.
Do I have a second on the proposed amendment?
I second.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second. So the discussion then is on the amendment. Mr. Lofgren, now, explain the rationale behind your motion.
Well, if SB, if SB 10 passes, it will mean that in future, the best it could be is 2.5, but it could be 1%. And it's important that we realize that if that happens, we're going to have a financial crunch. And I think we should take advantage of the situation right now and do 3.5. Also, I believe 3.5 is appropriate at this time. We have a lot of future projects that are going to come. We're trying, the city's always tried to buy the library. We're going to move the police department to the public safety building. We're going to have to redo stuff in there. That was not included in the budget. We have a liability of personal time. We've done buybacks, and there's a buyback in the budget, but that's a small amount. If things come better, that's more money to do streets and stuff. But I'm worried about the 1% and the 2.5%. That really handcuffs the city. And that's why I'm proposing this. So we can change it. We can see what happens. And if you think, if the council feels that 2.5 is correct, then go for it. But we, we had a compensation committee, and the compensation committee just passed a huge pay raises. Now, those pay raises, especially for police and fire, have upped the steps. So in the future, the amount of money that we're going to need for payroll is going to be more than it was in the past. That's the reason I think the 3.5 is appropriate. But we also, it leaves us the option to change it next week, because we can't go up next week if we go with the present.
Great. Any other comment, discussion?
I agree with Mr. Lofgren. And I'm concerned with the aggressive pay programs that we all have in our hearts that we want to do. But I'm concerned about it for the future of the city. As we get into those situations and have those pay programs continuing, our citizens still want their roads fixed. They still want all the other services that the city provides. And I'm just concerned about the future and what our abilities are going to be in the future. For tax rates, we're going to have to tighten our belts for sure. But we see it coming. And I, I just feel like it's the responsible thing for the city to get the rate that we can this year.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Scott. Anybody else have any other comments?
My, you know, I initially came in as a, a non-revenue guy. I felt pretty strongly about that. As more information has come about, I've stepped away from that, possibly begrudgingly, easy for me to say. And so I have moved off of, off of that platform. I feel that 2.5 was a, a, a good compromise. I was fearful of just maxing out because we had the ability to max out. I don't like the, the idea of that. I understand Mr. Lofgren and Ms. Scott's sentiment. I understand looking at the future as well. I don't like the idea of our state telling us how to run our cities. That, that, that worries me. I hope that some sense comes up there and, and they, somebody can stop that and let us run our own municipalities the way that we see fit financially. Nobody knows it better than us.
Well said, and I agree with that. I think what's happened with that, and this is just speculation on my part, is that the sins of many others have been visited upon, even those who were being more responsible. So, and so I appreciate your comments there. You know, to that end, at least from my standpoint, you know, I agree with Dr. Young on this from the standpoint of, and I'll just kind of echo a couple of things I've said before, and that is, we do have a responsibility. I don't think that that responsibility is to max out what we can get off a tax rate. I think it's to determine what do we need to provide the services that our citizens expect and deserve. Based on what I'm seeing in the budget, I think we can continue to do that in, with the proposed rate of .4790 and the budget that we've approved. I understand that we have a fiscal responsibility to the city, but that fiscal responsibility is also to the taxpayers. And I'll echo again, what concerns me is a max tax rate in the face of not just no growth, but a negative growth. I, I think we can do better there. We have to do better there. I, I see that changing coming down the road. But I don't think, philosophically, it just strikes me as fiscally irresponsible to max out a tax rate when you have no growth in the city. And so from that standpoint, I think we can continue to do, my opinion is, we can continue to do what we need to do at the 2.5% increase rather than the larger 3.5% increase. So.
Let me add something else. The Compensation Committee, Public Works was addressed, and I don't think it was addressed enough. I don't honestly think that it's going to help that much filling positions. And to me, we're going to have to revisit that. We need the money to increase. People want services. I spoke to, a gentleman spoke to me the other day about his trash picks up, and he said he didn't, he was upset that nobody was picking up his trash in a timely manner, and then all of a sudden they were. And I told him, we, we had to raise rates because we couldn't compete. And it's the same way with Public Works. We're going to, I believe we're going to have to go higher. We need the money to do that. People want services. It's important to them. Whether there's growth, no growth. Services are important to them. One thing with this, this is the first time that the appraisals have gone down since I've sat out there since 2013. And it's, it's, it sounds horrible when you raise a tax rate, but if you, there was a slide that showed that residents will actually get money back. Okay? They'll, they'll actually have, the number that they pay this year will be less and less, no matter what we set the tax rate at. Yes, companies and commercial will have to pay more. But residential's, residents were, they had, they were taking care of the taxes for many years. And commercial, industrial were getting a break, and I think it's only fair that they pay their fair share. I want great services. We have great people here. Okay? We need, to fill the positions, we have 25 empty in the police department. For a while, we froze Public Works because we couldn't even fill them. We need the money, and we're going to need more money, to be honest with you. And that's the reason I would go for the 3.5. I understand your point. I do. But I think it's more important that we make sure that we take care of services, water, fill potholes, and we need Public Works people to do that. We also have the, there's a lot of part-time, we've done part-time buybacks twice. There's still a lot that we need to do with that. So we have this obligation that's sitting there. If we buy the library, what happens? Are we not going to put any money into it? We're going to move from the, we're going to move to the public safety building. What's going to happen with the police department? If we move people around, there will be some costs. That's the reason I want to do the 3.5. I want to set us up for the future. The reason I proposed the thing about buying back bonds is because we should always do that. It's a smart thing to do. It saves us money, and it's going to help us in the future. I think the next year, we can look, the tax rate, whatever happens, we're going to save a bunch of money because the tax rate's not just the M&amp;O part. And as far as M&amp;O go, I look at. And as far as MNO go, I look at comptroller, you can go to comptroller website, you can find out what everybody pays in taxes, you can find out what they pay in MNO, what they pay in debt. Now, it's always a year behind, but out of the 100 top cities in the state of Texas, we have the 39th lowest. In other words, there are all these cities that had a lot higher MNO. The MNO is what gives us service. We have great people out there that get awards, departments that get awards. People don't realize all the great things that the city employees do, but they can't take vacations. We need succession planning. We have people, there's somebody in the audience I almost mentioned, I think he's in the audience. He's wanted to retire three times, and he's put it off because he cares about the city, but he should be able to retire, but we need to replace him. It's hard to replace his experience. So that's the reason I would propose a 3.5.
And I hear what you're saying, and I, you know, as you said, that you understand where I'm coming from, I understand where you're coming from. What, you know, this process is, at least in my mind, you come up with a budget to figure out, okay, how can we provide the services we need? And then once you have that budget, you say, okay, how much do we need to charge in taxes to do that? What I saw was, the initial budget was that there were some very conservative estimates, which I applaud, I get it, I think that's good, I think we need to be somewhat conservative, but I think some of our estimates were overly conservative in terms of some revenues, and I saw that we could make some very minor adjustments and still do everything we need to do based on a lower tax rate. If we were a city that was growing exponentially, if we were a city that was even growing, let's start there, okay, versus what we're doing right now, I would 100% hear where you're coming from, and I totally get it. But because of where we are right now and because of what I see in that budget is that we're still able to do all the things we need to do, and I think we're still able to meet our compensation goals, we're still able to meet our obligations, but do so at a lower tax rate to our citizens, then I think we owe it to them to say that's the tax rate that we need in place in order to provide you with the services that we are going to provide, that we can and have been providing to you. So that was my whole take on the two and a half versus the three and a half percent, so.
Mark alluded to that I attended the Golden Crescent Regional Planning Commission meeting, and I did hear the state representative, and it was pretty gloomy if SB 10 passes, that he did state it was going to be tough on the cities and on the counties, but I'm like Dr. Young, you know, I'm for no new tax rate at all, I keep it what it was, but also know that we did pass or give our public safety members a hefty raise, a well-needed raise, a long coming, but I just, I can't agree with a 3.5, and that's why I settled, I compromised with a 2.5, still above what I would want for our citizens of Victoria, but that's why I compromised that 2.5, but it's just, I think we can cut back on some of our wish lists that we have, because we do have a wish list, and it's going to cost millions and millions of dollars, but we're just going to have to hold back on the wish list and see what happens, but I would go with the 2.5.
Oh, I don't have any comments, I'm waiting for the vote.
I do have a comment. I think that both Mr. Lofgren and Ms. Scott have valid points. We've seen what a 3.5 would look like had we adopted that, and we looked at it as a projection. Mr. Garza was kind enough to show us what that would look like five years from now, where we would be. And I think, though, that as someone elected to this position, I have to represent the people of Victoria, and because of that, everyone in Victoria is struggling right now. Everyone has a budget that they're working off of in their households or in their businesses, and as such, if we are not going to go with a no new tax rate, then the compromise is something that I think that those of us that align with that are willing to live with. That will still be hard to meet people on the street and say, I'm so sorry, whether it's $8 or $18 or $180, it's still an impact when people are making choices right now of what they purchase at the grocery store. And so while property tax values, while we saw a decrease in what we anticipated would come in, that is not the case for all residences, and I think we need to be mindful of that, that some residential properties appraised higher, and as such, they will pay more whether we change this rate or not. And so I have to, I have to go with both Dr. Young, Mayor Crocker, and Mr. Delagarza and say that I think that this is at least a compromise, and I am not comfortable with a three and a half percent regardless of what we have in the budget. I think we would do what any fiscally responsible person would do and look at our budget and make adjustments accordingly to work off of what we can.
Any other comment? Because if not, I have a procedural question for Ms. Lacy. That I know, a tax rate vote requires a supermajority.
Yes, sir.
What we have is a proposed tax rate, and then we have an amendment to that motion. I'm assuming that the amendment would likewise require the supermajority, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure I was clear on that. Were there any other comments? All right, so what's before us then? The first motion would be Mr. Lofgren's amendment for a proposed rate at .4820. All in favor of that amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
So opposing is going to be Ricky, April, Dwayne, and Andrew.
Correct.
That's four, and then the other three, so.
Okay. So the amendment fails, and so then back to the original motion, which was a tax rate at .4790. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed.
Just Mark?
I believe so. All right. I see discussion, hang on just a second.
April, can you read me the record of how many yeses and how many no's that vote was?
Yes.
Yes, please.
For the .4790.
The only name I saw was Mr. Lofgren.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, does that... Is that everyone else is voting? Okay, we couldn't hear it back over here, so we're trying to make sure.
I appreciate you checking, okay, good. All right, so that takes care of the heavy lifting in the action items. So let's move on then to item E3.
Item E3 is a resolution approving a program management services agreement with AGCM Incorporated for the community center expansion project in an amount not to exceed $637,353.
Swelder, welcome.
Thank you, good evening. I don't know how you follow that up, but I'll do my best.
Just make it simple.
Okay, simple and quick. So the community center expansion, this is the next step of the process, and it is to award a contract to an owner's representative for the project. So, real quick, I'll tell you that we did do procurement for this. We did an RFQ, request for qualifications. We had a very high level of interest. We had 10 firms that put in for the project. It was very close. We actually went as far as doing interviews with a few, and so we came up, the committee that was assigned to that came up with the recommendation to move forward with AGCM. This is a quick look at the project leadership structure. You'll have the community center there in the center, you have the architect, which is Populus Incorporated, the owner's representative, which is, if this contract is approved, will be AGCM. The next step of the process is to procure the construction manager at risk, which would be sort of the general contractor on the project. AGCM, a little bit about AGCM is that they're a premier Texas-based professional services consulting firm. They specialize in construction management, cost estimation, value engineering management, QAQC inspection. As you know, they are working with us on the public safety headquarters, so we've been working with them for some time now, been very impressed. Founded in 1996, on the principles you see here on the slide, they have completed over 800 projects in that time, since 1996, so a long reputation in Texas. A little bit about the contract, there are two parts to the contract for the total of $637,353. That's made up of the project management section, which will begin at the inception of this contract. They'll help us with procuring the CMER, they'll have design input, they'll have onsite project oversight, as well as closeout assistance. The second part is the cost estimation feature, which is sort of a checks and balances with our CMER. They will go with our architects and the construction manager to verify that the estimation is done correctly, which has been a big help on the public safety headquarters. That's pretty much it. We do have two representatives from AGCM here with us today. The audience, Chris Reyes, a senior project manager, as well as, is it Veronica? Veronica, yes. So they are here just to show support and answer any questions that you might have that I can't answer, so that's it.
Thanks for that. I can't address anything you can't answer.
Mayor, if it's okay with you, since they're here, I don't mean to put them on the spot, but they did make the effort to be here tonight, so if there's anything that you want to add, please feel free to.
Come on up.
I don't see any movement, so.
Your reputation is going to speak for you.
I just want to say thank you, you know, for working on the headquarters, and would love to work with you guys on this project. And if you guys have any questions, don't hesitate to ask.
Great, thank you, appreciate you being here. I will say that I know that in speaking with staff and those involved in the project, they've been very impressed with this firm, and I think they have saved us some money on that project in excess of their fee, and have, just reminding everybody that that project is still under budget and proceeding, you know, on schedule, and so I think they've done a great job for us thus far, so we appreciate the work coming in. So with that then, are there any questions for Mr. Swelder? All right, then I will entertain any motions with respect to item E3.
Motion to approve item E3.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And E3 is approved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And we appreciate y'all being here, thank you. All right, Mr. Garza, city manager reports this evening?
No, sir.
I understand we will have a very short executive session?
Yes, sir.
Are you hesitating on whether or not we're having it, or whether or not it'll be short?
Whether or not it'll be short.
Correct. It will take place, I just don't know how long it'll go.
Got it. All right, well, let's take a short break, we'll move out of regular session into executive session, and it is 6 o'clock, we'll be back in 10 minutes.
The city council recessed for executive session on the second day of September 2025 at 6:00 p.m. Subject matter of executive session deliberation is as follows, Texas Government Code 551.087, 551.072, and 551.071.